Good morning and welcome back to Hardin County Commissioners Court. It's ten AM now on Monday, September twenty-eighth, and we have a regular meeting. All members of the court are present and the meeting will come to order. This time we'll have the invocation by Minister Tom Hodge, Church of Christ in Phoenix. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning. Let us pray. Our Father, thank you so much for another day. We thank you for the rain. We thank you for every good thing. Forgive us when we forget that you are the giver of all good things, Lord. Help us to never waste another opportunity that you do give to us. Our Father, we thank you for the men and women of this court and of this community, those who love the citizens here and love the law and love the ability to build this place up and encourage all of us to do our best. We pray that you will bless these men and women with courage and wisdom and patience. And we thank you so much for your word that we go to every day to find out how to live and do our best for you. Father, we pray that you bless us all with safety. Bless those who put their lives on the line for us every day with safety. Help us all to treat each other by your golden rule. We pray that, and we thank you so much for the inventions that you have given us of the family and the church and the law. Help us to hold close to your principles of law, protection of the innocent, punishment of lawbreakers, but fairness and love for all. We thank you most of all for your son, the only one to live your spiritual law in a perfect way, and then as he was executed by corrupt men, but in doing so died for all of us. We thank you so much for him and we pray this prayer through his name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Minister. Commissioner Cooper, will you please read the plea?
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number four, Linda Austin, County Clerk, approval of minutes of prior meetings. Good morning.
That would be the regular meeting on September the fourteenth and two special meetings on September the first.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Item number five, Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, presentation and approval of registered claims to be canceled by court. Good morning.
Today I'm asking if the court released me the longevity of three hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. These were the vouchers that were presented in Commissioners Court held on September fourteenth.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, Deborah McWilliams, presentation and approval of cash statement.
In our general checking account, we have four hundred forty thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars and sixteen cents. In our investment account at Wells Fargo, we have four million, three hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. In our tech school general account, we have two million, five hundred thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-one cents for a total cash funds of seven million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, ninety-two dollars and eighty-six cents.
Move a motion. Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts to accept the cash statement presented by the treasurer and a second by Commissioner Pelt. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Item number seven, Angela Gore, County Auditor, payment of county bills. Good morning.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures and transfers for September the fifteenth through September the seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, were two hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and eleven cents. The pre-approved expenditures for September twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, were sixteen thousand, seventy-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. And today, September the twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, expenditures for Commissioners Court are a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. The total expenditures and transfers are three hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-six cents. Gross payroll for September the seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, was four hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents. FICA was thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-three cents. Retirement was fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. The total transfer for September the seventeenth, two thousand fifteen payroll was five hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents.
Move a pay the county bill. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Angela.
Number eight, adoption of fiscal year twenty sixteen, excuse me, twenty sixteen Hardin County budget.
A move that we adopt the budget as has been presented.
A second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Were we supposed to have a record vote on that?
Yes.
Let's go back to item number eight. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Cooper, how do you vote?
Throughout the budget process, Judge, we have spent a lot of time on this, a lot of dedication by the auditor, by the county judge and all the department heads, each individual. I'll speak for myself, I've had an opportunity to oppose the items in this budget, which I don't think should be there, and we've done that on a individual basis. So overall, I vote yes for this budget.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall votes yes. Commissioner Pelt?
Yes.
And Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. It's a unanimous vote to adopt the fiscal year twenty sixteen Hardin County budget. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank everybody for working with us. We did things a little different this year. I think we involved just about every person, department head and elected official on budget workshops. I don't think we left anybody out. I sure hope that we didn't. Everybody worked very well with us. We have two brand new members on the court, as I've mentioned a couple of times, so it was a learning curve for myself at least. And I do appreciate everybody spending the time and taking the time to work with us on the budget. I know there were a few trying times and we worked through all of that, and I think that we've passed a budget that's good for the county and is good for the employees and the citizens. And I want to thank everybody for working together and making sure that it comes to fruition here today. Thank you very much. Item number nine is considering and possibly approve the order to adopt the tax rate of point five seven six two per one hundred dollar valuation and the breakdown of the tax rate for debt service and maintenance and operations to be provided by the auditor. Actually, if you look at the sample order in your packets, it has the breakdown, and I'll go ahead and read that off to you. The debt service tax rate would hereby be set at point zero one, zero four, six one per one hundred dollar valuation. The maintenance and operation tax rate will be set at point five six, five seven, three nine per one hundred dollar valuation, making the total tax rate point five seven, six two per one hundred dollar valuation.
Move that we adopt the rate point five seven six two per one hundred.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts, and this does not require a record vote since we are not exceeding the effective tax rate. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Judge, I don't know if it was stated or not, but this is the effective tax rate.
Yes, sir.
So I'd like for that to be part of the record.
Okay. I amend the motion to state that point five seven six two is the effective tax rate and that is the rate that has been voted on and passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number ten, Commissioner Kirkendall, precinct two, introduction of two new equipment operators, Annie Jones and Robert Tug.
Judge, I'm sorry they're not here, but I had to get them to do a job this morning, so we'll have to reschedule.
On the table to October thirteenth?
Yes, sir.
And I have a motion from Commissioner Pelt to do that?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Roberts. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven, Chief Kevin Cummings, Adult Probation Department, introduction of new community service officer Haley Baker. I don't see Kevin in here, so we will come back to that. Item number twelve, Nancy Kendall, managing local omnibusman, area agency on aging southeast Texas, adoption of resolution number twenty-six dash fifteen recognizing the month of October twenty fifteen as National Long Term Care Residents Rights Month. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for letting us come today. October is National Long Term Care Resident Rights Month. Every October, it is Residents Rights Month, and we wanted to come here to have, read a proclamation and just talk for a minute or two. I don't know, I'm reading from a proclamation I have, I believe, has one been drawn up?
Yes, ma'am.
To be signed here? Okay.
Move adoption of resolution twenty-six dash fifteen.
Okay, all right.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall to adopt resolution number twenty-six dash fifteen. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to add that we encourage you to visit our local nursing homes in Hardin County. We have five licensed nursing homes and one licensed assisted living. We do have a representative here from Coates Nursing Home back in the corner back here. If you haven't been in a nursing home lately, I think you'll see a lot of changes, and we're, our program is here to be an advocate for residents and to make sure their rights are insured. I think you'll see some changes. I was just talking to Judy recently, they had a wedding this weekend of two of the residents in the nursing home. If you, back in the fifties and sixties when nursing homes started, it's a stark difference from what you'll see today. So we encourage you to, to visit your local nursing homes and assisted living. There are currently an estimated four hundred people who reside in these facilities, and if you have time to go visit with them, talk with them, they're very interesting people. Visit with the staff, we have a lot of dedicated, hardworking staff, and we just appreciate you letting us come here today.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, Tammy Goodman with AgriLife Extension Agent, Administrative Secretary, adoption of resolution number twenty-seven dash fifteen recognizing October the fourth through the tenth, two thousand fifteen, as National 4-H Week in Texas. And I think we have some 4-H students here today, is that right?
Yes, sir. We just want to thank you, Judge McDannell, and the Commissioners for proclaiming October fourth to tenth, uh, to National 4-H Week in Hardin County. I'm Dakota Goss from the Sour Lake 4-H Club, and I'm the chairman of the Hardin County 4-H Youth Council and the president of my club. I'm here with Nathaniel Cartwright, he's our reporter representing the Hardin County 4-H program. For more than a hundred and five years, the 4-H program of Texas has been engaging youth in activities that help develop skills for a lifetime. These skills range from communication to community service and from goal setting to leadership. Regardless of the skill learned, the benefits that gathered from a young person participating in the 4-H program are priceless. We're a community of young people learning leadership, citizenship, and life skills. In Hardin County, this year, we have participated not only in our individual clubs, but the youth participated in the Hardin County Youth Project Show, the South Texas State Fair, county record books, county photography, shooting sports, District Nine Roundup with swine quiz bowl, food challenge, food recipe challenge, and the Texas 4-H Roundup with swine quiz bowl and photography contests, and also in the District and State 4-H Horse Show. 4-H is unique because it offers both urban and royal youth by providing the opportunity to participate in community 4-H clubs, learning experiences in school classrooms, day and overnight camps, and other special interest opportunities. A young person's experience in 4-H makes a difference for a lifetime by allowing them to grow and appreciate the importance of being a good citizen, a strong leader, and a person of character. The goal of One Day 4-H is to encourage 4-H members in every Texas county to take one Saturday in October to make a big impact on a big state. Each 4-H club or county program will choose how to best ignite the spirit of the service as we help improve Texas in hundreds of ways from border to border. On October tenth, all over our state, 4-H clubs will once again venture out into their communities and lend a helping hand in exciting ways to celebrate One Day 4-H and to say thank you to our communities. This year, the Hardin County 4-H program will be partner with the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service to celebrate their a hundredth anniversary of protecting the citizens of Texas and our county. To help celebrate, the Forest Service has provided Hardin County with one bar oak tree to be planted in our county, where the tree can grow and be appreciated for the importance of its purposes. Our tree will be located at the courthouse entrance facing Carrot Street at the emergency management and flood plain entrance. We would like to welcome the Commissioners Court and the community to join us in planting this tree on October tenth at two PM. So on behalf of Hardin County, we would like to present you with a token of our appreciation for your continued support of 4-H.
Thank you very much.
While they're doing that, I'd like to make a comment to the court and the audience. I was a member of the first 4-H club that Hardin County had, and I believe it was in about nineteen fifty, so that shows you I'm older than thirty-nine. It's a very worthwhile organization. I commend these young people. All the skills that she taught her about, it's things that you do learn. It's a very important program in our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we look forward to getting a new county agent to
Thank you, buddy.
lead these young men and women in a very worthwhile organization. Thank y'all for what you do.
I move we adopt resolution twenty-seven dash one five. A second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all again, we appreciate you. Item number fourteen, adoption of resolution number twenty-eight dash fifteen nominating individuals to serve on Hardin County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Everyone has the resolution in front of you. Is there any discussion on this?
Move adopt the list as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number fifteen, acceptance of Hardin County Appraisal District Fiscal Year Twenty-Sixteen Budget.
Do we have to have any action?
We just have to accept it, have to make a motion to accept the budget. We don't have to approve it or adopt it.
Make a motion, we accept.
A second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts to accept the Hardin County Appraisal District Budget. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number sixteen, authorization for the county judge to sign resolution number twenty-nine dash fifteen certifying that the county has made a grant to nutrition and services for seniors, an organization that provides home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly and/or have a disability, and serving that, I'm sorry, and certifying that the county has approved the organization's accounting system.
I move we adopt resolution twenty-nine fifteen.
A second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number seventeen, Irma Dowden and Carl Dahlquist, Gulf Coast Health Center, presentation regarding Gulf Coast Health, Gulf Coast Health Center programs that are available to citizens in Hardin County. Good morning. Would y'all like to come over to the podium?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Sorry to come in. But
It's okay.
Good morning again. I want to thank you all for putting us on the agenda. We wanted to come in. My name is Irma Dowden, and I'm a certified community health worker, and I'm with Gulf Coast Health Center. We are FQHC qualified and nonprofit organization. We're primarily healthcare, dental, behavioral health for the southeast Texas. Hardin County is one of our counties, I'm very pleased. We have an office here in Sillsby, Orange Jasper, two in Port Arthur, and we have a mobile unit that goes around in the Beaumont area. We accept all major insurances, plans, Medicaid chips, and Medicare. We have a program that is called EPHC, which is Expanded Primary Healthcare for Women. That is for the people who are not able, women are not able to, to get on Medicaid for some reason because they are not qualified, or they're not able to get onto the marketplace because they're not able to. So this program will be able to qualify them to get into the program. It could be as low as ten dollars to see a provider that's going to pay for their meds, and it's going to also pay for their labs. Excuse me, did you have something?
No, ma'am.
And we also just received a new grant that is called the PHC, and that's going to be for the men as well. So we're looking forward to be able to serving those in our community with that as well. We have community health workers and we have navigators, and they help with the marketplace. So I'm going to turn that over with Carl because he's our supervisor. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning. We received a grant a couple of years ago from, from HERSA, the Health Resource Service Administration, to be navigators for the community to, about the marketplace. We, the marketplace is, as everybody knows, the Affordable Care Act. We actually, people come in, we take them from step A to tell them all about it, doing the applications, helping them make decisions and telling them how the insurance works, whether it be copays, deductibles, coinsurances, and stuff like that. And all of it's free. We don't charge them nothing. It's just part of community service that, that we do for all our outlined areas. And as far as the, as far as Gulf Coast, we take all in insurances, but for those people who don't have insurance, we put them on a sliding scale depending on income and household size. So it doesn't matter if, if they're legal or not legal, as we see everybody.
Okay. Thank y'all very much. I know Linda Davis is over here on the front row, she runs our indigent healthcare department, and she would like to talk to y'all after the meeting's over.
Oh, that'd be great. And we brought some brochures and things to get y'all some information.
If you want, just set them on the corner there and then we'll grab them after. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Item number eighteen, discussion and possible action to accept the Governor's proclamation ordering the November third, twenty fifteen constitutional amendment election.
So move. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number nineteen, Linda Austin, discussion and possible action to consolidate county election precincts for the November third, twenty fifteen state constitutional amendment election.
We always consolidate our precinct, voting precincts on this constitutional amendment election. It's county money and everything, so we will consolidate those.
Linda, do you have a, know now which ones you're going to have open?
Uh, one, seven, and twelve will vote at the courthouse. Two, nine, ten, and eleven is at the Assembly God Church in Sillsby. Three, four, and five is be voting in Saratoga. Thirteen, sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen would be at the Lumberton Church of Christ. Precinct six will be at Crestwood, and precinct eight will be at the BFW and Village Mills.
Or did you say seventeen, fourteen, and fifteen?
Fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen will be at Sour Lake Community Center.
Is that the community center?
In Sour Lake.
Mr. Kirkendall?
Can we set up a box in Kennyhead? I have some concerns from citizens up there driving all the way into town to vote, and if I need to help you stir up some people to help, I can do that.
Well, Pine Wood has to drive into Sour Lake.
Right, but I didn't get complaints from Pine Wood, but I did out of Kennyhead, so.
I have them from Pine Wood, but, you know.
I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, how far is it from Pine Wood into Sour Lake?
About eight miles.
Eight miles. How far in from precinct eleven?
They're probably in the same amount. But I got a lot of elderly in precinct eleven, or the Kennyhead box.
That's box eleven?
Yeah.
Or box two?
No, two is one church.
Is that a pretty big box?
Rec. 11.
Rec. 11?
It is, yeah. And I mean, mo- most of your elderly people there vote and would like to vote, and if I need to help recruit some, some helpers, I'm not sure I can.
This way.
That's the box eleven will be open.
At Kennyhead.
At Kennyhead.
Be Wollamay.
Wollamay, yes, ma'am.
I think Pine Wood, I think will.
They've always.
Yeah, they used to. Most of them are not elderly.
Thank you, Linda.
Move we consolidate the election box. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty, Angela Gore, discussion and possible action regarding amendments to the fiscal year twenty fifteen budget.
The two thousand fourteen, fifteen fiscal year transfers are Fund Ten, the general fund, in the county judges' area, we're moving to the court reporter, four thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars, and it's coming from the health insurance, four thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. The Commissioners Court, we're moving to the financial administration line item, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. We're moving to the autopsy line item, ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and it's coming from the appraisal district in the amount of fifty thousand, six, six, six hundred and sixty-five. The election expenses department, we're moving to salaries for election workers, eleven thousand, fifty-five dollars. FICA taxes, sixty dollars, and it's coming from miscellaneous expenses of eleven thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. The jail operation, we're moving to the prisoner medical, thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, and it's coming from the salaries of twenty-three thousand and another salary line item of nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Transfers between various departments, we're moving to JP one health insurance, nine thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We're moving to JP number two health insurance, three thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. We're moving to JP two salaries and clerical, two thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. It's coming from JP five health insurance of ten thousand, ninety-five. It's coming from the auditor's health insurance of two thousand, two seventy-four. It's coming from the county judge salaries for clerical, two thousand, two hundred. It's coming from the county judge health insurance of five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Our maintenance and our utilities is going to maintenance and utilities for sixty thousand. It's coming from Commissioners Court capital murder trials for sixty thousand. Transfers between various departments is going to indigent care hospital outpatient of thirty-two thousand, two eighty-five. It's going to indigent care lab x-rays, eighteen thousand, seven thirty-six. It's going to indigent care physician services, eighteen thousand, one eighty-two. It's coming from indigent care prescribed drugs, seventeen thousand, six fifty. Coming from indigent care skilled nursing of five thousand. It's coming from indigent care ineligible expenses of four thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. It's coming from Commissioners Court insurance general liability, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. It's coming from Commissioners Court insurance deductible of seventeen thousand, seven oh two. Fund seventeen, Roden Bridge, is going to general Roden Bridge health insurance of six thousand, nine hundred and forty. It's coming from Roden Bridge two health insurance of two thousand, three hundred and fourteen. Coming from Roden Bridge three health insurance, two thousand, three hundred and thirteen. It's coming from Roden Bridge four health insurance of two thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. It's going to Roden Bridge number one salaries of a hundred and five dollars. It's going to Roden Bridge number one salaries of two thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. It's going to Roden Bridge one salaries for two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. It's going to Roden Bridge one FICA taxes of a hundred and two dollars. It's going to Roden Bridge one health insurance for fifteen thousand, six twenty-six. It's going to Roden Bridge one state unemployment taxes of sixty-nine dollars, and it's coming from Roden Bridge prior year surplus carryover of twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Fund fifty-three jury fund is going to the jury county pauper attorney adult of thirteen thousand, seven seventy-five. It's coming from your jury county pauper attorney felony of thirteen thousand, seven seventy-five. It's going to jury eighty-eight pauper attorney felony of twenty-five thousand. It's coming from CPS pauper attorney of eleven thousand, CPS court reporter of ten thousand, and from jury three fifty-six transcript indigent of four thousand. And then we have a, our last fiscal year budget amendment is going to general fund, fund balance of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, four forty, and it's coming from Roden Bridge fund balance of two hundred and fifty-two, four forty.
Thank you, Angela. I'm glad you had to read that instead of me. I just want to explain to the court, these are two shore-up line items that are in the negative. Angela and I have the authorization to make these transfers up to ten thousand, so these are the amounts that are over that that have to come to court, and then any salary adjustments that were made, or transfers within the budget that were made, has to come to court as well. So that's what these are to clean up these individual line items in the current budget.
Move we approve the budget amendments for fiscal year twenty fifteen.
I move we approve the budget amendments for fiscal year twenty fifteen. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Angela. Item number twenty-one, Sheriff Ed Kane, discussion and possible action to amend the twenty sixteen Sheriff and Constable Fees to add Order of Retrieval fee in the amount of one hundred dollars pursuant to House Bill twenty-four eighty-six. Um, okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, what is this?
Okay, this is a, uh, this is a fee for, uh, the, uh, if, if one of the, uh, JPs have to issue an order of retrieval uh, for someone to, uh, for a deputy to take somebody out to someone's house to pick up their property. This is something new, and, uh, it's something that was just brought to my attention by Judge Brewer, I think, uh, the beginning of last week, and uh, he discussed this with the sheriff, and they agreed on this one hundred dollar fee, uh, and that's what we charge for other writs of similar nature. Is that correct? So, that's what, that's what it's for. Thank you. Yes, sir. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-two, discussion and possible action regarding, regarding order setting day of week and location of regular term schedule of Harden County Commissioners Court Meetings for fiscal year twenty sixteen.
We set them second and fourth Mondays as normal unless amended later for holidays.
If I'm not mistaken, the only one that has to be amended is our very first one, October the twelfth, is, uh, Columbus Day, so we move that to October thirteenth. All others will be on the second and fourth Monday at, uh, ten A.M.
My second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-three, discussion and possible action regarding setting of twenty sixteen county holidays.
Move Sean Mash presenting.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-four, Misty Whitney, Purchasing Agent, permission to solicit bids for motor, motor fuel in all Roden Bridge precincts.
So, move second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And item number twenty-five is just, uh, I just announced it, but I'll announce it again, that our next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, October the thirteenth at ten A.M. Because that, uh, Monday is, uh, Columbus Day.
Move adjourn.
Or we adjourn. Can we go back to number eleven and table it instead of skipping?
Yes, sir. Kevin, ever to come in? Is that a motion, Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, I make a motion, will you table number eleven? Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall to table item number eleven. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we'll go back to item twenty-six.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn. Just want to remind all the Commissioners, we have some paperwork to sign on the table back here.
Thank you.
We stand adjourned.
Okay.